Seven oh one, I'm gonna call the. March twenty second, twenty twenty two. Planning board meeting. Order. Consistent with the governor's orders extending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click on the provided link. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the provided dial in number and pass code. Please only use dial in or computer and not both as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded in compliance with the American with Disabilities Act. This location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations. Excuse me, could you everyone mute please? Thank you.
I'll say I muted them.
In compliance with the Americans with this with disabilities, this location accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and land and or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you're a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternate format, or you require any other combinations, please contact the town's disability coordinator. William and all town engineer at seven eight one two four six six three zero eight. As far in advance of the event is possible. Every effort will be made to grant your request. Advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove an accessibility barrier for you. All right, we take a roll call vote. Bill Spalding.
Here.
Theo Knoll.
Here.
Jim Hogan.
Here.
And Matthew Lowry myself is here. Megan will not be joining us tonight. She had a schedule in conflict, so. All right. First or second item approval of meeting minutes. We have not received these as of yet. Is that correct, Susan?
Correct.
Okay, so we will postpone the approving of the meeting minutes from March eighth to our next meeting, so. We do have a public hearing starting at seven fifteen, so we're gonna wait until seven fifteen to get that moving. We have a couple other items. I don't know if we can really jump to anything at this point. Has anyone for item four, has anyone done any further studying for the procedures for changing street names? I have done a little bit. I think what we were gonna need to do is just start putting some kind of procedure order together, and then once we can get that written out, we can start fine tuning it from there. Obviously, we're not gonna get anything in for spring town meeting, but we're gonna shoot for the fall town meeting. I know there is one street name change proposal that's been already brought before the town. We may want to consult with the town attorney to see if we can move that process along and not have it dragged out too long. It's not their fault that we really have no procedure in place, but I think it would be fair to them to see if we can have some alternate resolution to this. And obviously, any new ones that come forward since we are working on this, they would have to wait until this was done. So anyone have any comments on that? Bill.
Thanks, Matt, and there is an Excel spreadsheet that I think we can use as our main fill in the information from the research and that we gathered. Should we as a board have maybe a Google Doc or something that we can all add the information to so we don't have separate ones and and I just wanna as far as procedures go, Matt, this should this could be something we can fill out outside of the meeting and then come back and and discuss it at the meeting, so. If anybody feels comfortable with doing that, I can set up a Google Doc with the Excel spreadsheet.
My only concern with that would be if we are collaborating on something outside of the meeting. It could be a violation of open meeting laws, so.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, we just gotta be careful of that.
Right.
I I think it might be better if if we do it outside of a meeting that we each work on individually and then send it. And we can all review them at our next meeting. I think that might be a safer way to to do this, just to.
Okay. Yeah, there are a few tools out there that we've been using to collaborate with. Obviously, a lot of companies are using MS Teams. There's another tool called Miro that's a cloud based that allows you to collaborate in that we've been having a lot of success with in our office and sharing with other people. So that's something else that maybe as a board we can look to and ask town council, Mr. Mullin, if it's something that does cross the line as far as collaborating outside of a meeting.
Okay.
All right. I'll I'll put that together and ask him just so we can have it moving forward.
Yep.
I'll put that on my to do list.
All right, Jim.
You know, I think the the Excel spreadsheet that Bill referenced, I think, has a number of the items that would be or should be considered, you know. I I kinda think it would make sense if we took that Excel spreadsheet and, you know, either one we go one of two ways, we either have the different members of the board look at it and basically, you know, submit something to a central person and say, as you say, we agree that this should or should not be an item, you know, we even have like a decisions that we have to make listed in the Excel spreadsheet. Or we could empower one of the members of the board to go through, make, you know, draft policy, have that be sent around to the other members of the board and highlight in, you know, red text or something like that in the draft policy. The items that need to be explicitly, you know, endorsed or consciously decided upon, you know, for example, there's a number of items as it relates to, you know, notice to different butters or other, you know, thresholds and stuff such, you know, it would make sense in my mind if we had either, you know, somewhat, you know, all the different members of the board fills something out, send it to some, you know, central centrally deposited location, you know, maybe one of the members of the board, and then we can go through that and kind of say, yeah, your day, we're all in agreement. Or just have someone draft it and come up with a, you know, make a series of reasonable assumptions and highlight where they think that there's, you know, potentially controversial items in the policy.
Okay.
I would advocate for something level of one of those two types of methods to drive it to resolution.
We can even after our public hearing, even just take the spreadsheet and and cut and paste and rearrange the, you know, the bullet points and at last, at least we can start working on something that we have a little structure to. So something we can probably do perhaps later tonight. One other thing I wanna touch on and I wanna do it why town engineers here, I've gone through with the draft of the A and R revisions that I had envisioned, and I think I sent that out to everyone. So we can discuss that, but we need to come up with some kind of procedure for the subdivision rules and regulations and the engineering department's gonna play a major role in this because I know they're gonna want some procedures that they're gonna want changed or tweaked, so. I'm guessing what we can do is take take a document and start do our first cut through that, see what we have and then send it on to the DPW. And Bill, I know it's gonna, you guys are busy, so I'm gonna try and give you, you know, plenty of time to go through this. And then we can go back and forth. At some point, we should we need to have a public hearing. Once this gets moved along far enough where everyone can comment on it, so. Does that sound like something that would work for you or?
Definitely, yeah, for sure. Yeah, just if you wanna send your drafts and then, you know, we've I have looked at it. I want to say maybe two years ago at this point, maybe maybe two and a half years ago with Paul. Different pieces of it, so, you know, I am somewhat obviously familiar and have some ideas on some changes already, so.
Good. But yeah, we can after our public hearing, we can also go through the the A and R regulations that I that I went through and I wanna get, you know, it's nice having these even looked at every couple of years because different people see things that might be obvious to us and not to someone else and there's ways to make it a little cleaner, so. Anyone have any comments on that stuff as of yet? All right, good. All right, I'm gonna wait a few more minutes. I'm not good at just being a weatherman and filling the this space with with words, so.
Matt, since this may be the our our critical mass of attendees, can I just use the the time to wave the flag for the first public forum for the Wakefield master plan?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's gonna be a Zoom meeting on April sixth from six thirty to eight thirty. And we're, yeah, we're really excited. I don't know, Bill, if you wanted to say anything, it's building off of Vision twenty thirty. And I think really speaks to some, you know, will speak to all of the elements over time of the master plan. We're talking about zoning, open space and recreation and the it will be followed with an online survey that the advisory board has developed in order to, I think, build off of the forum Vision twenty thirty and get a lot more of a, I think, really prospective thoughts about where to take the the master plans.
Thanks, Theo, and the registration link is on the town website. I believe it is. I'm on there now. There's a few different places you can go to get to it. One place is on our planning board site, or you can Google town of Wakefield master plan and it will come right up.
A really nice article in the item, so thanks to Jen McDonald and Aaron Kirkinda for getting that print soon.
Sorry, thanks, Theo. So you do need to be registered for that?
Yes, you have to register through the link and then they'll send you the Zoom invite, I believe.
All right. I think I already have. I think through my emails for all that stuff, so.
All right. Sixteen people, that's good.
All right, good.
I have one more time filler, Matt. Friday, I'm gonna be walking. I'm hope hopefully the weather's good. We have safe streets, Wakefield safe streets. We're gonna walk at one o'clock from town hall down a few of the main quarters and then out to Farm Street. Checking out walkability and bike lanes and stuff, so I'll be attending that not as a planning board member, but as a Wakefield resident. So I just wanna throw that out there.
Okay. All right, it's it's now seven fifteen. I'm gonna open the Starko definitive subdivision public hearing. We will be taking testimony later on after we from the public after we hear from the applicant, so. All right. Jill Mann, you're on here and Peter, hello.
Hi, good evening, board members, Mr. Chair. We actually don't have any new information to present. We did receive the engineering department's comments letter today, but after close of business, and I don't think Peter was able to really review it in much detail. I mean, there were a lot of items addressed and and, you know, the remaining comments, I believe, are going to be very quickly addressed by by Williams and Spradges, notwithstanding, we don't have more information or a revised plan. You know, based on that, I think I would just like to confirm that we did extend the board's decision date until June first, fearing that, you know, we may have a few more delays relative just finalizing our comments, but would welcome, you know, further discussion on items such as, you know, the cul-de-sac that we are proposing at the end of the road. And also relative to the removal of the cul-de-sac, which we have our client, Scott Green is going to reach out to that homeowner to be able to determine exactly how we're going to do it. And there I did notice that there were comments in the engineering letter relative to how the catch basin should be. I wanna say continue to be connected because they're connected. We're not gonna disconnect them, but how they should be graded so that that flow continues to go as it is presently. So I I at this stage, I mean, I guess we could talk about the fact that, you know, this is the development we're proposing and, you know, we're proposing the belly in the road in order to be able to provide low impact development. But that really is no new information for the board, Mr. Lowry. So I guess I, you know, I defer to the chair as to whether or not you want to ask additional questions. If you'd like to ask questions of Mr. Blaisdell and if you'd like to hear from the abutters.
Yes, definitely. Yeah, we did receive your your extension and we have it down for June first, twenty twenty two for the the board's deadline to act on, so. And yeah, so. Bill Reno, you you sent the the report out to them earlier?
Yeah, earlier, within the last hour and a half or so, so it's taken a bit of time, so obviously they didn't have enough time to really get into it, I'm sure. So there's a few comments on the drainage. And then a few odds and ends, a lot of stuff that was covered in the last meeting. So I've added a little bit of comments from my perspective, bracketing a little bit of the discussion, I think. But for the most part, I think most of the comments revolve around the drainage. And, you know, they'll probably take a little bit of time to to review those and get back to us. I'd be happy to have another meeting with the design team and if that's if that's requested, so.
Okay, all right. I don't know if any board members. Bill, do you, how long are you gonna be on here? Do you have to leave for another meeting or?
Yeah, you have me for about twelve minutes, so I I'm on the historic commission tonight to present, so.
All right, so I don't know if any board members have anything unfortunately quick quick questions. They they wanna put the bill again. We haven't seen his report yet, so we're going on just what we've seen previously, so.
Oh, you know what I did wanna mention, Mr. Lowry? I forgot. We do have a conservation commission because one of the members asked. We have a site walk on this Thursday at three P M. If somebody would like to join, I'm so sorry. It just I just had an epiphany about it and I didn't wanna forget, so I extend that to you.
Okay. All right.
I think Jim had a question. I saw his hand.
I I have I have a comment that I wanna bring up, but I don't wanna waste that if the other member board members have a question for Bill or no, I don't. It's my question unrelated to technical matters.
Theo or Bill Spalding, do you have any?
Nothing for the town engineer, but I just did wanna follow up on the conservation commission. I believe there's a meeting as well on Thursday evening. Is that correct? And I noticed you're on the agenda.
Yes.
Okay, and the site walk will be at three P M. That day before the meeting. Out on Starkav, okay.
Yes.
So.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask, it was town engineer, Bill, will you be there as well for the site walk?
So first I'm hearing of it, so.
Can I interrupt for one second? I'm sorry, so the three the three P M. Meeting on Thursday is really the Wakeville Concom agent is gonna go meet with Thor from our office just to go walk the line. This isn't the, okay, this this really isn't like the, you know, we have our first meeting, then we set up. Certainly anybody's welcome to go. We're not saying you can't go, but this is more like wetland scientist, a wetland scientist kind of walking around. That's okay, Joe. I I probably didn't tell you. So, yeah, initial public hearing is Thursday night. And then I'm sure they'll they'll set up a a public one after that, but.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, and we are gonna try to have a, if we can coordinate it, potentially a joint meeting with the planning board in Concom for that site walk, so that's still to be worked out, so. Obviously, they're gonna schedule this when they have their first meeting, which will be Thursday night, so. All right. I did have one quick sort of follow up for Peter. We were discussing last week or last meeting about the procedure that if someone had a that they wanted to put a driveway in that they could basically just pave over the trench. And it wouldn't really affect anything. Is that correct? My.
I believe, Mr. Chairman, you had asked me about the vacant lot that's next to Mr. Kelly's property. I think that's on the north side, that if someone wanted to put in a a driveway to access that lot, would it would it affect or impact the the performance of the trench there? And I believe the answer was no, because it's such a such a small amount of pavement that would be going over that trench. The trench is I don't know, four hundred and fifty linear feet long. It would still have the it would still have the stone below the the driveway. I if that's answers your question, sir.
All right, with the so with there's really no procedure for requesting a permit or anything for that, correct, so. They could make it as big as they wanted, or how would that work?
No, I I think when we discussed it last time, you would still need to get a driveway permit from the town. And you would have to you would have to comply with the town's driveway requirements. I I can't remember what Wakefield has now if it's if there's a minimum with or what the.
Phil has his hand raised.
Yep, thanks. Yeah, so we we don't we don't require driveway permits for private roads. We do for public. I provided a comment in the comment memo about it, basically recommending that it gets added into the the condo docs or the homeowners association docs and covered through there. So that this way it would ensure that the drainage system operates the same way. I really focus more on the drainage footprint as opposed to driveway specifically, but that's that's in there as my recommended, you know, comment.
I don't know if that answers your question, Mr. Lowry. So you you wanna know what if a person wanted to build a driveway on that vacant parcel, what they would need to do?
Correct. There's really no, there's no approval process. It's they could.
I I don't I don't know. I don't know this. I don't know the size of that lot, and I don't know what type of structure it could fit there. And further, I think the wetlands wrap around behind there. It might it it might be subject to Concom. I'm I'm not sure. I haven't looked at that lot.
All right, so it's same for if if the person at number fifty nine wanted a larger driveway. They they would just again pave over that or?
That's Mr. Mr. How or Mr. Kelly across the street?
I don't know the owner. I think it's this might be Mr. Kelly. I'm not sure.
Okay, so the gentleman on the the gentleman on the north side of the of the property?
Correct.
So, yeah, that is Mr. Kelly's house. So what would Mr. Kelly need to do if he wanted to increase the size of his driveway? He would have to get conservation commission approval, I believe, because he would have an activity within a buffer zone.
All right. So. All right, I know what I'm kinda curious because I know you're gonna have a homeowners association for the the three lots. They're gonna cover maintenance for this, but basically a third of your drainage system is on someone else's land. So, you know, I'm just trying to work through how the policing of that is gonna go forward.
Well, I know, I I mean, I know you do these things all the time, Mr. Lowry is is a land surveyor. I mean, when you do subdivisions, very often the catch basins lead to a stormwater management area that lies down on two or three different lots and you have a drainage easement there. They're not always maintained by the town, so the homeowners association has a has an easement to be able to access it. So I don't think this would be a problem if there's a a drainage easement showing the public drainage and that you cannot access it for maintenance.
All right, so you would take a drainage man across the entire entire right away then?
So the um, the the drain, the drainage trench itself is actually within the right of way. The little ponds that are off to the side are in drainage easements on the individual lots, so those people would have access to them to inspect them and maintain them.
Okay. All right. All right, well, if no one else has any questions for for the town engineer, I'm just gonna say thank you, Bill, and you can move on to your next meeting and enjoy your evening, so.
As well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
All right, other board members, do you have any other comments, Jim?
I'll looking through my notes, getting ready for this meeting. One of the items that came up, I don't know if we necessarily drove it to a resolution, was the placement of the trees and the easements associated with it. I know we talked about where the property currently envisions the addition of six tree six street trees, four on the south side and two on the north. And we had we started talking about how on the eastern side of the site on the southeast that there's street trees that are up on the embankment. And I wanted to follow up on that and make sure that we as a board provided direction to the applicant of whether or not we accepted that or if we wanted something different. In my mind, and I don't know, Bill or or Matt, if you could allow me to share my screen. In my mind, I I think what's would be a reasonable alternate to what's being proposed by the applicant would be to relocate those two street trees to an alternate location on the north side of the site so that it's not a street tree up on a hill.
Jim, you're outside to share your screen if you'd like.
Can you see that?
Yes.
Perfect, so the two trees, the two trees I'm referencing are these two trees on the on the south right here. And so in my mind, having these two trees on the top of this retaining wall doesn't make a ton of sense in terms of, you know, I I think it would be perceived as if it's the landowner's tree and they can do, you know, what what they please with it, right? And so in my mind, I think what would make more sense is if we took those two trees and we put them somewhere on the north side of the site, and I think there's kind of a logical spot to relocate them. And so this the the total number of trees remains the same, but it's just the location it are in, what I would argue, a better generalized location.
All right. I don't know if anyone has any any comments on on these. I I'll tell you that I'm not a fan of putting a tree on private property and having an easement for it because at some point, no one's gonna know it's a street tree and and that is actually happened a lot. The town over the years has placed trees on on private property and my my neighbor has two trees on on their land that the town planted and they come by and check it every once in a while, but they have since moved on. New people are there. There's no documentation that there's street trees that you can't touch them, things like that, so. I'm really not a big fan of putting trees on private property because even with an easement, no one's gonna follow up on it. The homeowner doesn't like it, the tree dies, it's, you know, that's the end of it. It won't be replaced. And I I doubt that the town is gonna maintain that if it does die and put a new one in there, so. I'm almost in favor of having the trees potentially placed someplace else in town. Maybe they be donated to the town to be placed in a different location, so I don't know how people feel about that, but I think we could require the, you know, it would be nicer if the applicant, we're gonna put trees out there and committed to it, but I don't think we should call them street trees. Because I don't think there's really much follow up for maintenance and longevity on them, so. Anyone have any comments or thoughts on that?
Mr. Mr. Chairman, just just as an aside. So those two those two spots that Mr. Hogan put there, you know, I understand your your concern about the street trees and that there really wouldn't be street trees. They they would just be trees. But there's really not gonna be certainly the the location that's over near the wetland, their flag be two. You know, nothing's ever gonna be developed over there. That's actually within the twenty five foot buffer, so. Same with the other tree on on the on the right down there. I mean, there's really, there's not much you can do over there on that lot. So I mean, you could certainly put that over there, and I don't think you'd ever have to worry about anybody. You know, hitting it or to start damaging it, but if if you did want to have the and I agree with you, I mean, having street trees not on the street doesn't make sense, but again, you know, we all agree this is a little bit of a different animal. If you wanted to have the street trees donated to put someplace else in town. The street trees donated to put someplace else in town. I mean, I have done projects in Wakefield where that. That did happen, that they wanted to put them in another place. So we're, we're, this is kind of what I was hoping for. We'd have a discussion about.
And, and if, if the board so chose and wanted to have street trees or trees planted along that area, because it's a homeowners association. I can do a restriction and even put it in the body of the deed and you can condition approval on it. That the new tree shown on the plan shall remain. And that the homeowner association will be responsible for them in a similar fashion as the stormwater. Now, I recognize there wouldn't be follow up, but I can put that in and control it in that manner if, if this board so, so desired.
All right, good, Jim.
I, I'd advocate at a minimum of, of having the trees get planted in those two locations. And, you know, Matt, I, I hear you in terms of the easement and, and I, I don't necessarily advocate for adding something that we think the follow through is not gonna be likely. Likely to be done, but if they get planted at the very minimum, they're there. And, and, you know, in, in reality, at least to start the, start, you know, the life cycle of this site. So I would add, at a minimum, ask the applicant to commit to planting them in those two locations. As, um, as a manner of, you know, starting the process, uh, or starting the site off the right foot, quote, quote, and then, um. And, and then kind of, you know, I, I don't necessarily think that an ongoing, you know, requirement to, you know, for the town to maintain these. Is an appropriate mechanism. But I think if we at least plant them, then at least that the site, um, starts off in, in the way that's consistent with. You know, the, the tree vision, for lack of a better term, of the town.
Okay. Um, that, that's fair and to CONCOM, you know, probably weigh in on that anyway, so, um. So, you know, I'm fine with that. All right. Now I had, I did have one other question about the, the trench maintenance. I know you have in there that potentially the, uh. The stone needs to be removed and, and refreshed at times. Um, how would that work on the north side where you have a sidewalk basically over half of the trench?
So the only, the only place that would be, would be clogged would be the, um, the pea stone that's between the edge of the pavement and the, um. And the sidewalk. So if, if that top layer had to get claw, uh, replaced, you would just have to dig that down and replace it. And sometimes they'll actually take, take them out and wash it right on the site. And then, you know, just check and make sure that the filter fabric is still in place and then you can put it right back in once it's been cleaned.
Okay, so you, you, the maintenance would be basically of the top foot or so of pea stone, basically, so.
Yeah, um, a- and again, this, you know, uh, Mr. Renault put some comments in about it, um. You know, so we'll, we'll get back to him on that. But, uh, yeah, that's, that's typically how it's designed, is that the top layer kind of takes the majority of the, um. Of the, of the fine settlement and that type of thing off the road.
Okay. All right. At this point, I don't know if any of the board members have any more comments, um. We want to open this up to public.
Can I ask one quick question? Um, the, 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 the maintenance of the trench, that's. Um, that's an expense that's part of the capital reserve, that's six thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
Um, is this, um, I, I don't know it, uh, much. Is the six thousand dollars sufficient to start a capital reserve? And what's, is there a best practice for how that is funded, maintained?
Well.
Where, where does six thousand come from?
The six, well, I had a similar project, um. In Georgetown that had, uh, stone infiltration trenches and that type of thing and. You know, nobody knows the exact dollar figure, but sort of the focusing on the question that Mr. Lowry just asked, like in other words, if we had to, you know. Break and shovel up the top layer of it, um, how much, how much would it cost to do that and clean and put it back? And actually, the town of Georgetown. Uh, had a contract to give an estimate. It came back to be something like two thousand dollars. Um, that was a three lot subdivision, a little bit different than this, but we just said, why don't we just be a little bit conservative and we'll make it two thousand dollars home? So. That's, that's, that just came up kind of as a, an educated guess, um, professional judgment. I'm sorry, that sounds a little better than educated guess. But, um. That should be a sufficient amount to start off with, just to make sure that, um, it gets inspected and maintained and. That should, that should do it to start off.
Is there an expectation that it, it be always refreshed up to a minimum of six thousand?
I can certainly talk to, um, uh, Mr. Green about that and we can certainly have a conversation with, uh, Jill about that. And we can, you know, make sure maybe that that number always has to be at six thousand dollars. So in other words, if they have inspection and eightens come in and it gets down. They spend a couple thousand dollars cleaning it up, that everybody has to pitch in and keep it back up to six thousand dollars. I think that's what it normally would, normally would be.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Theo. All right, we're gonna open this up to, um. To the public. Um, I, I, but first though, we did get a letter from, um. Ivy Bork, she lives at ten Molly Circle and, and one of her questions was about the. The, the easement for possible, um, future roadway up to Molly Circle. Her question is, i- it continues to be on these plans and she is basically asking what the, you know. What the likelihood or, or, you know, how would this go about if the applicant wanted to use that option to, uh. To extend the roadway up there, so. I know it, it's, it's one of the applicant's options, so I'm just gonna, you know, I, I'm not gonna ask you to. Comment on it, but I think I can perhaps answer some of it. So, uh, what I'm gonna, I'm gonna share my screen. Just so, um. You can see what we're talking about. It's this, this easement right in here that she's concerned about. Uh, I know the applicant had said potentially. Um, they could extend the roadway up, um, through to Molly Circle. So, uh. Ms. Fork's question was, you know, is that, is that possible? And I suppose, um, it could be possible, but as you see that. The applicant does not own this parcel of land right in here. Uh, right now it's owned by the town of Wakefield. So in order for a roadway to get extended up there, they would have to somehow get control of a portion of this land. And they would have to get that from the town. So, uh, part of the procedure for, for doing that would be, I think the town council would have to deem this as surplus land. Once it's surplus land, it goes out to all the departments to see if they have any use for it. Uh, and I know conservation typically, if there's wetlands on here, they will say, you know, this is not a piece of land that. Really should be sold, so. As I look at it, it would be very difficult for a roadway to get extended up there. So I just wanted to answer that question. I don't know if the applicant wants to. Comment rebut on it or anything, but, um, she asked a question. I'm trying to answer it to the best of my abilities, so. All right.
That, that, that answers the question. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, again, uh, public comment portion, uh, if you want to, uh. Ask a question, um, please raise your hand. As I've said before, if, if you have a video, it would be nice to see you. Um, please make sure your name is, uh. Also your proper name, uh, what's it called? And you can, uh, identify yourself, uh, your name and where you live. All right, Bronwyn, I saw that, uh. You've got your hand up.
Uh, yes, good evening. Uh, Browandala Volpi, Cyrus Street, um, um. Mr. Lowry, could you just review very, very briefly what you just went over about how you felt that it was very difficult for that easement to. Um, eventually become a road connecting up to Molly Circle?
Yeah, let me, let me share my screen again, um. So. Zoom in here a little bit. So. This is the area in question. This is a easement for future roadway use, forty-five foot wide. Um, as you can see, there's a, the, the applicant will have control of this, this piece of land up to this point.
Yes.
And the town owns the, basically the other half of that. So in order for a road to go through there, you would have to have proper right of way with. Uh, they don't currently have that right now, so they would have to get a portion of this land in order to do that, so.
Does, this, does this view show us how far up Molly Circle is?
Uh, no, it doesn't.
Okay, all right. I mean, I, I know where Molly Circle is. I was just wondering about how far away it is.
There's a detail, Mr. Chairman, I think in the upper left, if you want to pan over to the left, um.
Okay, there we go.
Just kind of gives you an idea. That match, that match line, um, Mrs. Delavolti, uh, that you see on that little detail kind of lines up with the one that, um, the, the Mr. Chairman just showed over there. So it's, it's just above that line.
Great, okay. All right, thanks. Um, yeah, cuz that, that was one of my concerns as well. Um, the other is, is this going before the ZBA or not?
No.
No.
No, okay. Uh, my other question then is, uh, someone asked the previous question about, uh, the six thousand dollars. Is, is there gonna be a bond or anything for this in case? Something goes wrong or so that, um, either the town and the butters have some recourse? If, um, something goes awry with the, with the project, I mean, so that they can go back to the builder and have any. Mistakes corrected if need be. Do you know how that works?
Uh, well, typically the way it works is, um, the applicant will build the roadway. And once it's complete and the town, the engineer signs off on it, then, um, they can build the houses. Uh, normally what happens is they want to build the houses and the roadway at, at the same time. At that point, they'll put up a bond to cover the remaining costs of whatever's not done on the roadway. Um, and then as the roadway is constructed, some of those funds will be released back to the builder. Um, and then again, once the, the roadway's been inspected, everything's been constructed per the plans. Uh, that bond will be put back to the, uh, applicant, the, the builder and, uh. The roadway should be completed at that point.
Okay, so is the road as well as the houses being built by the same person? The same entity?
Potentially. I mean, they could build the road and sell off the lots, so you know, that, that would be up however they wanted to do it.
Um, does anyone here have any information regarding that?
We, we aren't certain one way or the other. It's possible that the builder will build both the homes and the roads and. We're not committed to that right at the present time, either way.
I say, yeah, I was just concerned that once the, the homes were built, that the new owners had some recourse. Uh, in case something went wrong.
Uh, I, I would, you know, typically if, if a builder builds a road and sells off the lots, whoever's buying the lots will, you know. Will have some agreement in there to make sure that, uh. The road is gonna be constructed properly also, on, on top of what the town engineer is gonna be doing.
All right, so clearly if the, if the, if the lots are sold as, as empty lots, then there would probably be a different builder, correct?
Potentially, yeah.
Okay, okay. Um, all right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Mr. How?
Hi, Steve How, fifty-eight Stark Ave. In there. Um, I had a question regarding the potential homeowners association. Um, would this be strictly a passive financial thing where this group? As they buy their homes and as they own their homes, they contribute financially. To inspections and upgrades that are somehow made automatically? Or is it expected that of these three homeowners? There will be some level of involvement that they will. Go out and look at these road drainage systems and say, oh, we need to call someone to inspect this. And we need to call someone to wash and strain our pea gravel. Um, or is it strictly a, a passive thing where those, though, the, the homeowners association? They, they contribute money and these things just happen?
They, they, they don't happen. They, they contract for them and they're obligated to contract for them and, and those. Particular structures is gonna be on their properties and will influence their properties. And they will maintain them because we're gonna force them to maintain them. Um, so I don't know what you mean by passive and active, but they're gonna have to actually undertake that activity. There's no such thing as, you know, perpetual agreement like that.
Okay, I, I, I'm just assuming a, a homeowners association, we're only talking three, three homeowners. You know, three families, three individuals, three whatever. I'm just not sure, you know, people, these are busy times and people. I, I don't know that I, is this homeowner is gonna have, what, associated, gonna have like a president and a vice president and a chairman and have meetings? Are they going to?
It's not that. I mean, no, yeah, it, not, you, you're talking about a condominium association. It's gonna be a group of three people who are gonna maintain. You know, and contribute funds and collectively will hire somebody and, and get it taken care of. I mean, I think that, you know, the process for this is going to be similar to what's done in many, many other communities. I mean, it's not, this is not an unusual scenario. It's, it's actually quite common because as towns move into, um. I don't know, it'd be more and more different types of stormwater facilities. Towns are moving away from maintaining them. Regardless of whether they accept the roads or not, they don't like to maintain structures or low impact development, um, structures on. Private property. So these are very common. I mean, they're used throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So it's going to be done like that and they're gonna maintain them. And if they don't, the town does have the right to go in and do something about it.
Yeah, so Steve, there is a, there's an operation and maintenance plan that, that the association is supposed to follow. There's yearly inspections that have to be done, is even for the first couple of years, uh, more frequent inspections.
And we'll record that stormwater plan, so it's of record, so that they know that their property is burdened by it.
And, and typically what happens is, is if they don't do it, the town has the option of coming in and doing it and then charging them for it. Um, one of the things is, these are, you know, for the most part relatively new. I mean, we've been doing these in Wakefield for, well, per se, ten years. I really don't know what the track record is on people actually having them inspected and followed up. That, that's one of the, the issues is that they kind of fall flat if no one. There needs to be someone from town who's gotta be looking at these things, going through them, checking the records. So tha- that's one of the, the gray areas that, uh. Doesn't really hold up too well, so that's why town engineer always kind of wants to have a, a system that. Is not a high maintenance issue and is not gonna fail quickly anyways, so.
Well, that's just my concern is that human nature being what it is. I know homeowners, particularly in these times. They buy a house and they'll agree to cer- they'll agree to certain things and they're gonna, you know, I know young homeowners, I know older homeowners. You know, you can drive around and see some people are pretty active and pretty maintenance oriented. And some people are very hands off and very much just live in their house. And it just seems a lot to me to think that, again, a burden for. Being involved in this to some level won't fall on the town, which again is fine, I, you know, but i- if the town is aware of that, that's fine with. With me, um. It, it, it just seems like. Uh, this is. It doesn't seem like the homeowners association, uh, is, is necessarily a solution. You're saying we'll take. Three groups of very untrained people and because they put in some money, they'll know what's going on here.
Mr. How, if I, if I can interject, Mr. Chairman. People hire companies specifically that go out and they do inspections and maintenance, um. For a profession. So, uh, my company gets hired to do certain inspections for towns of North and over and over. Ongoing projects, um, we go out on a weekly basis while they're under construction and later. ongoing projects. Um, we go out on a weekly basis while they're under construction and then later on, we have to follow an operation maintenance procedure like Mr. Chairman had said earlier that there's no one in plan. So we, we're not, we're not, uh, i- if you're, if you're feeling is that, um, the gentleman or the lady that's going to buy the house that's going to be next to you is going to be responsible for going out and inspecting and maintenance. That's, that's not, that's not what's going to happen. They're going to have to contract with somebody that's going to be trained and qualified to fill out annual inspections. Um, so.
What if they don't?
What's that?
What if they just don't?
Well, they can, they cannot do that. However, that's, that's part of the condition and I, and I can tell you that, um, sooner or later it catches up with you because a lot of the towns that you see like Wakefield, Lynnfield and the other towns, uh, they have planning departments that have been going through all of their records and they're now starting to catch up with some of these subdivisions that haven't been turning them in. So, and they're, and they're asking them to turn them in. So, um, I can't make you clean your gutters, um, only you can clean your gutters. Um, so my, um.
That'll ruin my house, not, not, not impact the neighborhood and roadways.
If I'm tall, if you want me to come over and help you clean your gutters and I'm there and you have a ladder, I'll certainly help you, but, um.
You want it because I, uh, I, I aged out of ladders a few years ago.
Yeah, that's okay. I've only fallen off a couple, but the idea, Mr. How is that this is going to be done by, uh, contractors.
Just like. I understand that. I, I know, I know we're not, we're not asking amateurs to go out there and, and play around in them. I, I, I just like I said, with a small homeowners association, I just, again, human nature being what it is, I don't think a lot of people buy a home thinking whether they're in a homeowners association or not. They're not always taking a real activist involvement and I'm just concerned that if they sort of assume it's somebody else's job, no matter what the paperwork says. Cause I've been at enough real estate signings where not a lot of paperwork gets read. Um, again, it either, you know, i- i- it doesn't happen in a nice crisp, timely fashion that professionals like yourself or Ms. Mann or Mr. Lowery would, you know, again, if it's, if it's in your wheelhouse, boom, 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 that's what you do. But if you're just a homeowner and it's, yeah, the drainage out in the street, I, I, you know, somebody must take care of that. Um, and again, I understand if there's an association, there's, there's going to be some, uh, you know, uh, attempt, especially initially to inform people of their responsibilities. But again, people are supposed to shovel their sidewalks too, but I have to walk in the street a lot in the winter.
I shovel my catch basin and fire harder every storm.
Yeah, just, just a concern. I mean, just a concern. I, I, I don't, you know, I, I, I wouldn't have the answer. If I had the answer, I wouldn't ask the question.
I, we understand your concern. Yes.
Yeah. And, and we, we do look at this, um, we do push to have, at least I especially push to have things engineered a little bit more uh, robustly so that some of these maintenance issues don't have to happen. But, uh, with the nature of, uh, development now and, and what the land that's left over, everything takes a lot of work and the stormwater regulations are getting stricter and stricter too. So, uh, the state, uh, the town and this board are, are looking over that and, and, you know, as part of our decision process in the end too.
So I mean, just as a last thing, I mean, a pretty central issue to this area. There's a stream running through there. I mean, you know, drainage and, and water management is a pretty big issue. I mean, I'm, I'm up fairly high, but and I, I, I guess these new houses, at least the ones on my side of the road, look like they're going to be up on the rock there, but that one on the north side and, uh, number fifty-nine, the Kelly's house, that water backs up things. Things, you know, water is water. It just doesn't slow down. Uh, and, and again, I, just asking a question. I, I was just concerned about that. I wasn't sure what the mechanisms were to, to kick that into place.
It's, it's a good question. And, and like I said, um, a lot of these subdivisions that we've worked on, we've, we've, there's a lot of procedures in place. Whether they get followed in the next couple of years, um, we're definitely following along because, you know, in the future, that's going to play into any other decisions we make that if no one's doing these maintenance and the town has to follow up on it, then we wouldn't be approving them anymore. So, um, but no, it's, it's a good question and, and thank you. So.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments, questions from the public at this point? All right. So, uh, next steps, obviously, um, you're going to have to digest the, uh, town engineer's comments. Um, we haven't even seen them yet, so we're going to take a look at those. Um, what, what do you think? Uh, when do you think you'd be ready to come back for the board?
But we have our, um, well, the good, the good part is that, you know, this, it's the same stormwater report. That the conservation commission received as the planning board received. Um, so all of these comments we can give to Elaine and Rebecca. Um, so that they can, they can go over it when we, when we meet with them. So, um, I'm hoping, I'm hoping to have something back to you. Like I said, I'd like to see after our meeting on Thursday, uh, and our site visit, how that goes and if there's any other, uh, you know, questions or concerns from the commission on the drainage. I mean, they may, um, you know, we're going to give them all this information anyways if they haven't received it from Bill already, but that, like I said, that's the nice part and kind of what we were hoping for was to have the same set of calculations before both boards. So, um, if you don't meet on the, you meet on the fifth and then you meet on the nineteenth.
No, April, we would, we would meet on the twelfth of April and then the meeting, the next meeting would be May tenth. We only have one meeting in April because of an election.
All right, um, if the twelfth is three weeks from tonight?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if, uh, with respect, let's, let's continue to, uh, unless Jill has any, uh, objections, uh, continues to April twelfth and, um, like I said, there's still, there's still some more, um, uh, information. I, I still have my notes from the last meeting and I still have some information from Bill and I talked to him a few minutes today and I, I think, I think we're getting close. So, um, let's, let's shoot for the twelfth and I'll try to have, um, a letter back to, uh, engineering as fast as possible. The only problem is I can't guarantee that everything's going to be resolved with them by the twelfth, but
Yeah.
We'll have it, we'll, we'll have it back to you and we should be able to have a, uh, revise set of plans into Aaron before that.
All right, um.
Matt, there's a hand up.
Yep, yep. Jim, I see you have your hand up. Do you have a question?
I, yes, um, Jim Freesher, I live at eleven Molly Circle and, um, I'm one of the butters. And so my biggest concern is the stormwater management and the drainage. Um, so through my back window for sixteen years now, I see the rainstorms just beyond Lance, Lance Kelly's house. It's like an open fire hydrant at times. That's, that's the stormwater that's coming out. Now we're adding more to this. You've got this new low impact development. That's fine. But with the waters leaching into the old, um, into their property, the old Galucci property, which God bless him, the guy was brilliant for his time, but there's all man-made, um, culverts and hot top in there. It's, it's not up to date. So, so my concern is downstream, who's going to maintain that? When that fails, is that homeowners association going to maintain it? Are they, are they going to address it before they build? What, what, has anybody taken that into consideration?
So you, you're seeing downstream from where this, where this is right now?
Di- directly behind my house is the old Galucci property. It's, uh, so their address would be Nahat. It's, it's changed a few times, the property owners, but there's a culvert made. It's been hot topped with piping. There's a steel, uh, milk crate there to keep the, this big debris from going through this makeshift culvert that he's got. And it goes across into this stream like that goes all the way down from the back of stock all the way to the hot. It, it's quite a bit of, it's pretty impressive to see during a rainstorm. And now we're adding more rainwater, stormwater drainage to this already fragile system, I would say at best. Is, has anybody taken it into consideration or even looked at it?
Uh, nothing's been looked at downstream and, and I, I know this is going to be controversial, but they're not really adding any more water to it. The same amount of water is going to basically go in the same direction. Um, uh, the only thing this development could do is, is in, in what we're trying to do is to not speed it up as it gets down there and to make sure when it gets down there, it is not as, you know, it's not dirty. So it, it's hard to say we're adding this, this development is going to add more water to it. It, it's the same amount of water that's basically falling now.
Well, it is, but it's being absorbed by the eighty trees right now that are probably going to be removed for the three house lots. So there will be more water, I would have to say. Now it's coming off the roofs into the drainage system, reaching into this, this property. Of course, there would be more water.
So, Mr. Freesher, um, like, as Mr. Chairman just said, we have to comply with the stormwater management standards, which means that even though we are taking trees down and adding pervious surfaces, we have to, um, not increase the rate of runoff that leaves the property. So by doing that, um, we have to, you know, put in these best management practices that hold the water on our site or exfiltrate it more. Um, to your, to your point, um, I've, you know, I've, I've, I've been working in Wakefield since nineteen ninety-three or so, when I was just a, a rod man and, um, I've surveyed all over the place and Wakefield is a, a very challenging place to try to figure out the drainage. And as you said, I believe this goes out to, uh, Dean Road, ultimately goes across Nahat Street, under Nahat Street. I think it ends up out in Valley Street and then it ultimately ends up in, um, in the wetlands that are off the Mill River. However, uh, trying to find, uh, plans that show you accurately where the culverts are in Wakefield are kind of challenging because people in the forties and fifties sometimes just put in culverts wherever they felt they needed a culvert and, um, I don't, I don't deny that during certain times of the year, you've probably seen a lot of runoff coming back. All the runoff that comes off of Molly Circle, uh, as you know, uh, goes to that double catch basin. That's right next to your house and that actually discharges onto our property. So from there, it then travels through a swale and heads back around to the back of Mr. Kelly's property. So.
Right, that, actually the swell is, comes right behind my property, right behind my.
It runs, runs right down the property line that you have with, with our property. The best of my.
Correct. I- into this makeshift, you know, this makeshift, uh, little bridge that he has out back.
I, I don't deny that you see some crazy drainage structure in the Wakefield, but, um, that's off our property and, um, we can't, we can't do anything about that. All we can do is not make it any worse. And that's what our, and that's what our, uh, our design shows.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, anyone has any more comments or questions? Um, I'm going to, uh, continue the public hearing. Till April twelfth, twenty twenty-two and actually it'll be, uh, and start the public hearing at, uh, seven oh five, just so we can get into this a little bit quicker. Um, and I, I'm, I'm surmising at, at that point, we should have a good indication on, uh, you know, what the final subdivision is going to be looking, looking like out here and at that point, we can go through some of the waivers and make sure that, uh, we're all set with that. I know that town engineer is going through and, and looking at the waivers. So, um, if the town engineer is fine with, with a lot of these waivers, I'm, you know, I know I would be fine with them. I, I obviously I can't speak for the rest of the board members, but we would want to go through that and make sure that, uh, there are no surprises there. So I suspect, uh, in our next meeting, we can be doing that. So, all right. All right.
Thank you for your time, everybody.
All right. Thank you. All right, um. Um, all right, let's go back to, um, item number four, discussion of, uh, procedures for changing street names. Do you, do we want to pull up that spreadsheet and try to organize, uh,
Sure.
Some of the, the steps, just so we can start working on some kind of outline here.
Let me pull up the latest. Show my screen. Let me, let me find the document first. Street naming. Okay. So I'll pull up the combined research and the Excel and share that. Shall I be able to see that, um, Excel spreadsheet, which haven't really changed much. This came in through Jim and, um, I added a few pieces of information, so resorted some of it, but, um, the research, there, there are some sections that are missing that I think as a board we could add and that had more to do with um, what was on the research part, which I think you should be. It's not going to let me share both at the same time. Let me redo that one. So this is the, the street sign research that we pulled together as a board, questions to ask, what to think about. And this was distributed to the board for the last meeting. So, um, this, there is a lot of information to go through and I think we could spend a lot of time, I think, cutting through, um, if you did get a chance to look through that Excel spreadsheet will help us stay focused and really just start to fill in some of the information that as a board we feel is important and then maybe get rid of the stuff that we don't think applies. And, yeah, it, maybe this is more of a subtractive process tonight.
So I was thinking about it that we start, you know, with the process. So someone has a, they want to change the name of a street.
Okay.
What do they do first? Do they, do they go to engineering? Do they go to, uh, clerk's office? Do they go, you know, obviously they have to go to someone in town for the initial DPW. Uh, you know, I think we should outline, you know, so someone walks in the door. They want to change the name of the street or they need to send an email to someone. Who's the first one to do this? Do we, do we say it's, it's got to like a, uh, warrant article that's got to go through town council first and then they send it to us for a public hearing or? So, yep.
Just, so Matt, there, there's a couple of different, um, ways you can do it based on the review of the research. There's, um, you, you can do it where there is literally, there's applications. When you just fill an application, you send to the board. Um, but you know, whichever board that may be, I personally would advocate for something like that. I feel like that's the cleanest way to do it in terms of of something comes to, to our board, you know, with an application with a, a number of the pieces of relevant information. In fact, I think there's actually some precedent applications that are attached to this, this file. Um, so that's how I would envision that this process should start. Um, and then associated with that, there's another decision point that the board needs to make as it relates to a fee associated with proposing a, a change to street naming.
Okay. So, so you would want the first, you know, I think an application is a, a good way to start too. Do you want it to come, you know, to the board to, you know, we can even do it, just, it just goes to town council and they handle it too. And the planning board does do anything or, uh, it comes to us. This almost seems like a constituent services item, to tell you the truth. So, um, it, it may be the application is filled out. It, it goes to town council and then they send it along for a public hearing and then comes to us. I, I, you know, I'm thinking that might be the way to go.
I like that as well, Matt. And I feel like once it goes to town council, town's council then directs it. Well, there's an application, application goes to town council, then it comes to the planning board.
So we can make sure that it's in order as it goes to the required reviews and notices.
Yeah, so so the town council could out of hand reject it. Right away, duplicate street.
Yes.
Offensive name, whatever. So if they deemed it, it, you know, has merit. Then they start the process. I guess the process would be a public hearing through the planning board. Is that what we're thinking?
It's there's in in my mind. That there should be a public hearing with the planning board with the minimum number amount of notice. You know, two weeks, something to that effect, to make ensure that, you know, there's notice in the community. You know, there's there's also in terms of the application, I think one of the important things and why I actually would advocate to not have it go to the town council. Is a I believe that we should have a requirement in part of the application in terms of. Uh you know, a number of signatures in terms of the butters, you know, some percentage of them in order to validate that there's consensus. So my my opinion, a part of the application should be, you know, a signature of a butters and then that would. Allow the applicant to skip a town council and then go into the planning board. You can just submit an application and then go directly to the planning board. Kind of make it a streamlined, a little more streamlined of a process.
Well, then that would go to understood, then that would go to the town clerk to review. The butters or people who live on that street to verify their address and all.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I would advocate for, but I'm obviously, you know, other other board members of the board can disagree.
No, that that's fine. And I've seen a couple of applications like that. In in different areas. Got one here from. Basically, it's from Jefferson, Missouri, and it it basically is. Feel you fill everything out with the signatures right on there or or they have to send a letter. So, you know, that. That's fine if you wanted to just. So they would file that with an application would be filed with, we think, town clerk.
I think it would be filed with the town clerk with fee. If if this is the direction it's going, so it's. Signatures from butters. I mean, then we have to, on the application would have to be all butters. And then we'd have to define what that would be. I mean, residents of the street or. Avenue.
I think personally, I would advocate for um. People who live on the street and I would advocate a certain threshold. You know, whether that be fifty percent or two thirds, I think there's valid arguments for both. But I think it's signatures of everyone who's on the street. I think there should be a certain number of the threshold. I think the idea of it going to town clerk makes a ton of sense because they can validate it for, you know, some of the other elements that are more. I would call it administrative in nature, you know, making sure it's not similar to other street names in town. And that it hasn't changed within the past X number of years. Some of those elements that might be more readily able to be validated. Via staff rather than having us as a board try to validate that on the fly.
Okay. So. We have an application because the town clerk, town clerk then. Forward to to uh planning department, planning board, oh.
To get on the agenda.
Well, it's not just on the agenda, it's it's the the public posting process. So this is where Aaron's gonna have to. Or or someone in Aaron's position or or like like position would have to. Basically get a legal ad written up. It's going to paper. It's got to be paid for all that stuff. So it's a typical public hearing. Process. So. So the application approved by Tom Clark. Gets sent to uh. Economic Development slash Planning Director, whoever it is at the time. And then. So see, see, this is where. Uh you could have an application go through. Uh you have a public notice, public hearing, and then the first public hearing that we have. Someone says this is offensive name and the whole thing is is done with. So there's really no. There's no filter in there to maybe, you know. To to quality control it before it gets to the step. Is that something we should have?
To be honest, I would advocate that it would make sense for this board to be that filter. Um if others disagree, then. I that totally makes sense, but to my mind, I think that makes sense if if we're going to be the ultimate authority who's approving this, then I think it makes sense for us to. Be the ultimate authority approves this and then ref and then in my mind, we act as a filter to it going to town council for their ultimate approval.
Right. So hypothetically, someone comes in, they wants to change the name of a street for to to. Blue Street. It goes to the whole process. We advertise it, you know, someone wants to change uh Gray Street to Blue Street. When they get to us, we figure out, well, there's already blue out, you can't have blue street. So they say, well, I'll I'll make it Yellow Street. Does that mean we have to have a new public hearing process?
I personally think that something like that should be filtered to the town clerk when it's submitted. For quality control or, you know, as as I said, as at a staff level, because. I don't know about you, but I don't know every street name I thought my head um in town. I think that there's. There's got to be an ability, or maybe that's when we go to, it goes to planning. You know, I think there's there's a filter where it gets the planning board, but then the adjudication of if this is offensive or not, I think is something that has to be done by. An elected board, not by a staff member.
So it would it would need from town clerk, it would then need to go. You know, to all the departments and ultimately the department that decides this usually is fire department, the. Fire chief knows every single street in town and can tell you instantly whether it's going to be confusing or not. So. So he would. I'm just again trying to get the process here. Town clerk would have to have sign off on. On different boards or different departments.
So, uh Bill, if you can go down, there's actually a list of places that we, you know, just as a brain dump in terms of. Places that we thought may or may not need to to check the box in terms of approving it. Um I think it's required review slash notice. You know, nine one one fires a great one, police, town engineer, ISD. You know, and there was a question whether or not of all these different departments, is there a specific approve, do they have approval rights? Or just notification rights? And if there's if and for example, for fire department. You could also make the argument and then there's other precedent applications where you actually have to go and get the fire department to approve the name prior to the submission of the application. Which I think is something that's worthy, you know, worthy thing to think about if that's something that's worth. The the price of admission, for lack of a better term.
So right on the application, they need to go to the fire department first and have them sign off on it, give their initial, they're okay on it.
That's an option, you know, and and then there's other couple other ones that, you know, police. Town engineer, nine one one, the I listed them as ones that I I think it's it's worth thinking about critically. Whether or not they want to be, you know, a series of boxes that you need to get checked and and, you know, potentially signed off by those the relevant entities. That they agree that this is, you know, safe, you know, from a public safety perspective.
Okay. So, yeah, this is the process. I started thinking about this and it's like, man, there's a there's a whole bunch of steps here. It sounds simple, but.
You're yeah, it was it was more complicated than I thought when I started the research and you're asking all the right questions.
Yeah. All right.
Uh we have a hand raised from the public. I don't know, Mr. Chair, if you want to um address that now or wait.
I I we're in the. In the. The Jim Hogan stages of of uh. Of child rearing here. So I think I'm going to hold off. Unfortunately, Bronwyn, um we're still, we're still working on this. Once we get something worked out, then we will. Obviously, we're going to have a public hearing on it and we will. Probably uh. Request some, you know. Or we'll be more likely to answer questions once we know the rough outline, so.
And 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 Matt, I think I think it's kind of, you know, some of these other ones, right? The the ZVA, Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light, the DPW, but you know. Historical Commission, I I I don't know if we necessarily want to have it just be in approval from those different departments or if it's just a notice. You know, I think there's definitely good arguments, pros and cons, both ways. But I also don't know necessarily where they would be in the process. I don't know if you'd want to have like. Oh, you know, some some poor person going around all these different departments and getting them to all sign off. And then start the public process after that. You know, I think it makes sense to kind of check the box from a public safety perspective is what I would advocate for. And then after that, you know, the other more I would call subjective. Reviews might make sense to have, you know, as part of the process that we outline.
Yeah, so once we, once it's deemed that the name is is could go forward, it's not going to be conflicting. Then as the public knows process, you know, as they send it out, it could go to every board. This is a potential street. Anyone want to comment on it? And then we could listen to that at our public hearing and then, you know, decide going forward if you want to do it. So. Yeah, I don't, I don't want a person to have to go through five different departments and, you know, that could take. And if there's a pandemic going on, it could take years. So. So, you know. I don't want to potentially do that. So. All right. So. Fill out the application, it would go to the town clerk. To fill out an application, they would have to go to the approval for the fire department first.
I I would almost say all three. It seems like nine one one, fire department, police department. Uh I was. Thinking about this as you were mentioning it, Jim, I don't know, is does the Wakefield Fire Department have? More say or prominence over the police department in this case? Just a general question.
They are in the same building, so it's not like it's. You know what I mean? Like, I I if you're gonna go talk to one, it makes sense to talk to both.
Well, I just I just think of streets, I think of the police department as well. That is at any plans that are going through for approval. Obviously, the fire marshal, fire department. Has that sign off and they get their own sheet to do that for life safety.
Well, I would, you know, I would be more likely to go to the fire department because they're actually in on. Subdivisions in process too, where the police department really isn't because they're handling, you know, day to day things. The fire department is looking at, you know, going forward, there's a new subdivision. They have an aim on there that's going to be similar to this. So therefore, you know, when this subdivision comes online. It's going to conflict with this, the fire department, the police department most likely wouldn't know that because it's not even in their system yet. So that's why I always say go to the fire department. They they always know all the streets in town, what's going on. The new streets coming on, where even streets could go and or shouldn't go. They're usually tuned in pretty well with this, so. And that's usually the default is the fire chief is the one who I don't think we ever had a comment from the police department on. On any of this stuff, so.
Agreed.
So, yeah, I would say, you know, the applicant potentially just goes to the fire chief, gets that checked off first. Then they get their signatures. And then they bring it to the town clerk. That way, that first look. Um that first gut check, is this even, you know, feasible is is taken care of. So.
And then to be, and then one of the other things, I think, um Mr. Chairman, is that when the public notice goes out. I actually believe that. And I think it's probably the town wants to do it and then frankly include the cost of it to the to the applicant in some manner or an estimate. But I I think that we have to have certified mail go to everyone who lives on the street of the public notice, even even above and beyond. The typical in the paper. You know, I know that a lot of people probably miss the public notices in the paper, but if my street was being. My street name was potentially under advisement to be changed, I certainly would want a letter from the town uh regarding that process.
Well, yeah, this would be a, you know, a ZVA level notification or subdivision. It would be. They'd have to get a, you know, once it goes to town clerk, the town clerk would basically certify. The signatures on there that they have enough and then produce a. A certified butter's list and then certified mails would go to each of those anyways. So you would. You know, just because someone signed off, they, oh yeah, I'm good with this, doesn't necessarily mean. They are. So a certified letter would be the the next backup and then public hearing would be the. You know, the third check on that, so.
I almost feel like we need more than just a certified letter. I think the planning board should be responsible for drafting what that. What that should contain. That way we're notifying, it's like Jim wants to change the name of Gold Street. That affects me. And there's a lot of other people here on Gold Street, but it's it. I don't think people take a step, oh yeah, that'd be a cool name for our street, not understanding your driver's license, your credit cards, everything else that goes along with that, your banks, everything. So um I think it's more than just certified mail. I think as a as a board, we should be step up and be responsible for. Listing the possible items that you would need to change if you sign this.
So you'd say on the application, you you'd want to say by signing this, you're aware that. You're you're going to be responsible for. All of this.
Right.
That's what you, okay.
Right, right. I I'd hate something, somebody thinking of my mom. That would sign this when somebody came and knocked on their door and said, hey, I'm looking to change the name of the street to this. Oh, that sounds like a great idea. And she signs it or it gets changed unknowingly. That's going to have a big effect on a lot of her paperwork.
I mean, honestly, that may that may be, you know, when we're, you know, when we have to collect signatures for our own elections, right? There's a box of text. On the top, you know, in terms of like a form, please sign this form. Uh maybe that's the similar, you know, we have a similar part as part of the application. You have to have, you know, X number of sheets or whatever, then it has the that preamble at the top of it.
So, but it is a two-step process. There's right, getting a minimum number of signatures to start the. To submit the application form, but then we do need to confirm ultimately a minimum number, uh percentage of a butters. Before the, you know, before the planning board says yes.
Well, that that's where the town clerk would come in and and shit, they would, they would sign off and saying, yes, they have, you know. The the required number of signatures to move. You know, to the next step, which is. Filing for a public hearing.
Yeah.
So. So, yeah, I I agree, you know. Up until it gets to us, it's out of our hands. So we would want to perhaps on the form, just put in, you know. You know. Fine print.
Yeah.
By signing this, you potentially agree to. You know, inform the registry of motor vehicles and form the library, inform the gas light department, inform. The registry of deeds that your street has changed and, you know, on and on and on. So. We could, we could add that in.
Thinking of the filing fee. And I have no problem with the two thirds. I think somewhere around there sounds right. The filing fee, is this something that we should? Check with DPW. Susan can leave a note on someone's desk and say, hey, what does it cost for street signs or just to collect? Susan can leave a note on someone's desk and say, hey, what does it cost for street signs, or just to collect, it's like. If two or three street signs are needed, which maybe sounds right, I mean, minimum would be one, but maybe it's two or three street signs. Um, the polls, that all that stuff, um, changing versus new. Is the applicant covering the cost of that?
Well, I think that that's not the same thing as the filing fee. I think the filing fee is really intended to, to cover the cost of the legal notice. In any certified mail, and then there's kind of a second step where.
There'd be a separate fee?
Yeah, there'd be a separate fee that's actually done to act, during the execution of the actual chance. And I think that that's something where. We as a town probably, once we, before we go through the full process, probably. That we need to build something in there where there's like an estimate or something like that, that goes, comes from the DPW to the applicant.
Yep, good, I'm glad I asked, okay.
But you've got, you've got issues with filing fees too, if you're doing a filing fee for a street that has four houses on it. That's, you know, sending up certified mail, that's not that bad. Someone want to change, you know, Mahan Street. There's a lot more houses on there, there's more work involved, so there has to almost be a proportional. Um, filing fee to the size of, uh, the street.
I, I honestly, I think that might be one of those things where we set a filing fee, that's. Call it what it is on the higher end, and. You know, we. You're gonna win some and you're gonna lose some, just kind of taking a risk as, as a town, but I think you kind of take one, uh, like. A street that's at, like a reasonable level, a reasonable size, you estimate what it's gonna cost for that, and then you just make that the filing fee for everyone.
See, Wellfleet has a $200 fee when you look through that, but. Um, right. I don't know if that's just an application fee.
Yeah, the, the fee structure, while very. Oh, significantly, if you look at different municipalities we were looking at, as, as low as zero dollars. So you can do it for free, all the way up to almost like four grand, which seems like a lot to me. You know, I, I think a happier medium that I was seeing is, you know, items in the three to 400 range. You know, somewhere in that range, Wellfleet maybe 200, that's, that's not bad either, right? You know, in my mind, we kind of take a, a best guess, you know, a reasonable amount and. You know, of what the filing fees, you know, would be for a reason, you know, a reasonably sized street. And you said it, and then, you know, there's gonna be. You're not gonna hit it dead nuts one way or the other.
Okay.
Alright, so that's something we're gonna have to determine what a, and we can get from Aaron, you know. Cost of, of advertising in the paper, things like that, so. And that's obviously gonna continue to change as going forward. But there's also, you know, the applicant can also pay for. For the postage, the addressing of the envelopes and it goes to the town clerk and they put the stickers on and send them out, so. You know. That's another thing to look at too, so.
Yeah, Bill, can we look at some of the, the actual criteria for the street? Need the street to be renamed, I think those are some of the, the. Uh, this process question, you know, these process questions are great, but I think that, you know, the eligibility or, or. Some of these other things are also very important, and I think a lot of them make a lot of sense to me from being a hundred percent honest. You know, having, so you can't change a street within the last 25 years if it's already been changed. Yeah, or if, if 25 years isn't the right cadence, but you know, I think that there should be a cool off. For sure, you know, so you're not changing a street name over five years.
So, the next question is how do you find out if the street's been changed in 25 years? So typically, the, the town clerk is, is the keeper of the records, so. I, I guess they'd have to be a checkbox on there, that town clerk checks out this. Street was last named, and then maybe put the date on there or has not been. Renamed in 25 years, something like that, so. Again, everything that we put on here. Someone's got to do some work in order to, to vet it, so. So that might be something you want to put it on the application, is that a, a place for the town clerk to check off? Correct and non-signatures, name has not been changed in 25 years, uh, or whatever the. Another one, the fire department nine one one, please have, approve this. Because then you get into the, the other ones where. You know, the street shall not be used to honor any living person, you know, I mean, we can have that or not. That would be something that it would come through. I think the. Perhaps the public hearing process, the planning board. Same with the name of a corporation, unfortunately, you can pick any name. Main Street could say it's for main corporation or something, and so that would have to be someone looking at it a little bit more than. Checking off a box.
Yeah, you made sure that you don't have target drive, but target, target drive could be unrelated to the, the store.
Exactly.
Yeah, you, you, you have to, you have to use some love of common sense.
Well, that's when the applicant would have to basically convince us that it's not. You know, name for corporation is some tie-in, you gotta show some, I always, I just decided to change it on the whim, so.
And that's why I think some of these items, like the living person of the corporation, you know, those are items, I, I'm full agreement, I think it should be a written down policy. But it should be of the, ultimately, the decision of the board to adjudicate whether or not those are applicable in those specific cases or not.
So do you want, shall not be, or, uh, is that something that the board could? Could waive, or how do, how do you want to handle that? Do you want to make it absolute?
I personally would advocate for corporations as an absolute. And I, I think I'm more open to a, a living person, but I personally think it's a good policy. You know, you never know if people may have done some good deeds and then, uh, you know, after the street is named, uh. Named after them, they go and do something terrible and then you want to undo it, I.
I can, it's within 25 years.
Yeah, you know, I, I personally think that that's, in my mind, I think that's a so, a sound policy to have it until it's. Someone who's, you know, not with us, but.
I, I'm gonna play devil's advocate. Joe Green, the third comes in and wants to name it after Joe Green, the first, who's passed away. Is, is that? See, now you get into that gray area, it's like, are you naming it after you or your?
We already have a green street, sorry.
Exactly, so.
But I hear, I hear you, and I think, I think that's also where it would be a, a comment upon the board to. Apply a little bit of common sense of, you know, if Joe Green, the first is some. Someone who's not prominent in, for not prominent, and Joe Green, the third is very prominent. I think everyone would kind of see through that smokescreen.
Alright, then, then you may want to take out shall not be and, and perhaps put, you know, should not, or. Obviously, shall, shall is, is a big word, so. I don't know how you'd want to frame that, but.
Just under consideration.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, let's put it under consideration, but I, I think, yeah. I'm certainly with all of, uh, with all of y'all in the, I mean, that's the role of the public meeting is to. You know, uh, to adjudicate this kind of thing, uh, so it does seem at a minimum. You know, it hasn't been changed in 25 years, it's not being named to honor a living person. If it is, then they're asking for an exception, right? Which would then, that's why you would have a public meeting.
Yeah, another. Something else came up that you're saying that to, yeah, there's the 25 years or more state law reference. Is there something that as we're doing this? Is there state law reference that we should? Follow to take away some of what we have to decide? Or to govern?
Yeah, it did seem like the state law was really about. Um, the public process of an appeal.
Right.
Alright, well. I don't want to get too into weeds, I just wanted to. To, again, just get a start thinking about that, this, once you start getting into a little bit, there's a lot of ifs and whats and. You know, what, what's, seems like, oh, that makes absolutely perfect sense. Then you realize, well, there could be some conflict with. It will not honor a living person, well. Someone's gonna have that name somewhere, uh, so that's where. The board, the review process, the, the in-person review process should hopefully be able to ferret those, those issues out. So.
So just, just to, to summarize this. Town council's not included. Step one would be. The application needs to go to the Wakefield Fire Department, the fire chief needs to sign off. Step two would be the application goes to town clerk, and we will determine the details of that application.
So. At the end of this, the end of what you see is the planning board process. Do we then give a recommendation on to town council and let them have the ultimate? Or you want to keep them out of it? How do you? How, how do you want to handle this?
Well, it gets back to this re, required reviews notice, like where do we sit here?
In, in, in my mind, it, it probably makes sense for us as a board. To, you know, when we receive the application, we go through the public review process, right? We summarize our findings and then we send it to town council and. You know, I think that it makes sense for them, you know, we summarize our findings, we send it to town council, they're the ultimate. Deciders, uh, unless if they don't think that they want to have that responsibility, they want to put it to the planning board, I think that's totally fine, but. You know, if I look at the, um. The engagement of the electorate in terms of, you know, their elected officials. I think town council, there's a, there's more engagement in terms of that process, not saying that we don't have it, but I think that it. I think they may be more, uh, interactive with the public and a, able to hear the constituent concerns. In a more real-time manner than maybe us, us members of the board. I don't know if that's, if other people think that's a fair statement, or if that's.
I, I think it's fair, and I think we could be overlooking the required reviews notice, um, human rights, I mean, we might be blind to something that. Could be. Not in the right tone, or it could be offensive to someone, so that there's another board that this would need to go in front of, or they, they're. Like we do, like we get our, um, papers from. You know, from the ZBA or wherever, and we read through them, so does that? Is that the review process that we're looking at? A PDF, hopefully a PDF and not. Paper mailed to each board member of these other boards in town, so they. Can speak up if they wish to, and we require them to notify us before our public hearing. I, is that the same process that we want to have?
I personally view all of these boards that we're talking about here, you know, on, on, on the screen. As similar, and I think that process is fine, the only one that in my mind, that's an outstanding question is, is. Is town council, do they want to be the ultimate body that approves or disapproves, or does that want to be the planning board? And I think, I think there's valid arguments both ways, frankly.
I, I'm almost. Meaning towards sending it on to town council and have them make the ultimate decision. Um, and, and hopefully. They would say, okay, the, you know, this went through the review process, it's just a final, okay, go forward with it. But.
I think it's also high, it's a little more high-profile if it goes to town council, but I also think it makes sense for it to go to town council fully baked. So that they can take action on it and, you know, with one review theoretically.
Yeah, so it, it gets brought up at a meeting, they, they. They have looked at it, if someone has any final objections. They could state them, but otherwise it's okay, approved, and that's it. And then that gives the notice to. Basically DPW to go, you know, start the process, and then we'll get into the whole other, who, who gets, you know. How the notification goes out from there, but I, I think we can. We can look at that at another meeting, so. So I'm gonna take one of the. I'm gonna play around with one of the forms I have and see if I can redo it a little bit and see if we can fill some of these in, and I'll have an example. That are one of our future meetings. So, if you guys want to pull one up too, uh, I am, just in case you're wondering. It's this city of Jefferson, Missouri petition for street name changes when I was looking at that. Spells out a lot of it right there, so. That might be one we wanna. Potentially look at. So. They also have a, you know, a staff initiated one, so if, if the town council wants to name, rename a street, it's a kind of a different process. So, which in that case, I would definitely want them to be the ultimate decider of that because. The town council starting the street name change is, is gonna be, you know, a bigger issue. Cause they're potentially forcing it on, but it could be a small little street that no one lives on too, so it would be easier for them just to. Do that process. Alright, do you think we've discussed this enough tonight, or how do you want to? Think we've got something started at least?
Yeah, I, I, I'm glad we discussed it.
Alright.
Um, just in terms of ball, you know, ball and court, or how to define next steps, do, does someone want, do we want to, uh, assign? Someone to take this feedback and, you know, provide a draft. And then distribute it to the rep balance of the board, and then we can use that to, you know, I think. I think Matt's doing a great job of interrogating all the different aspects of this, but I think. Until we start writing a draft policy, I think it's gonna be difficult to really know if we've. Examined all the nooks and crannies of the requirements.
Yeah, I'd like, Matt, I can help you with that, that way it gets up to the board, I also want to combine that with, um. There, there's just a better way to work than what we're doing right now with the combination Excel. I'm, I'm not a big fan, but it's easy to organize and put things together. Um, I would love for us to be able to work, all of us be able to open up a document and add to it.
During a meeting or something?
Or even before the meeting to, to review, so if you added a bunch of stuff up there, we could review it before the meeting and we could. Um, then discuss at the meeting, but there'd be no discussion or anything on the collaboration board. And that's something that I do want to check with Mr. Mullen to make sure we're not. Violating any open meeting laws.
Okay. Um, I think we should start with the application process and kind of hold off on the, on the process.
Yep.
Once we get the application, then we can start writing, okay, these are the steps you need to do to initiate this and. This is what's gonna happen, and then we can work into the fees and things like that later, so. But yeah, generally, it's a good idea to have an application in, in that way. It's standardized. It's standardized. I don't know if anyone's even gonna use this when it gets done, but at least we've got something. Other towns and cities have done this, so it's not like we are, you know. Making a new round thing or something, so.
Right.
Yeah. All right, good. So, yeah, Bill, you and I can kind of work on this if you can get a sharing. Program going, that would be good.
Okay.
All right.
Nice, nice, nice research and good collaboration.
Yeah, good. All right, item five, is there anything to discuss on Lake Overdage Overlay District or are we? Still gonna wait at least until we have a couple of those forums.
I think we need to wait.
One thing came up out of the um the master planning process, um I'm gonna find my notes here. Uh it's either Massachusetts, chapter ninety-one, that um discusses enhanced zoning review of development with a hundred feet of Boston Harbor. And uh, there you got it.
Yeah, so chapter ninety-one, I've I've actually experienced this in my professional life. Uh it is applicable to advance or a supplemental zoning review for uh it's not just the Boston Harbor, it's also for other. Waterways that either connect to the sea or used to connect to the sea. So, for example, uh there's rivers in Malden, for example, that that are applicable to chapter ninety-one. And I believe it also triggers uh additional environmental review. You know, I think that that, you know, we can make an argument if you wanted to in terms of the environmental review, but. I think we already have Concom. I'm not sure if that's the right tool for for an overlay district, but. I think there's definitely an argument to be made one way or the other on it.
Yeah, I that's uh that's really helpful, because I I I wasn't thinking that I was like as environmental, but more like. I I like the enhanced zoning review aspect to be like, well, you know, that's the.
The the other, the other big thing for chapter ninety-one, that's that potentially could be very applicable, in my opinion, is I believe chapter ninety-one. Uh I can't remember if it's only for Boston or other parks, but I think there's like a um you have to provide access for the public to that those specific waterways. So like, you can't just build, you can't just wall off the harbor from from the public. The public has the right to enjoy the benefits of the the scenic beauty or something like that. Of those waterways. I believe that's the other major component of chapter ninety-one.
Yeah, they never define what scenic beauty is.
That's our problem.
Yeah, I yeah, I run into it as well.
It's just one of those undefinable things because it's.
It's.
Everyone sees different things, so.
Beauties in the eyes of the beholder, right?
Yes.
The Malden River is beautiful to me, because I grew up right next to it.
Yeah, I've done work down there. Yeah, it's this.
Now there's, now there's footpaths next to it for all the places that are new properties.
Yep. All right, um. Gonna move on to item six, um discussions of. Discuss revisions of subdivision rules and regulations. Uh I'm gonna share this, what I sent you already. So, as you can see, I I didn't make a lot of changes on this. One thing, and I. Probably gonna get labeled as 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 being woke or something, but I I do like to go through and change. Feminine masculine to to gender neutral because, you know, they're female. Engineers out there, so I'm, as you can see, I changed his to their. Um and then. Basically, I I much, I'm, I don't know about the, if this is actually gonna fly, why I put it in with the advent of remote meetings, but. We just ki- I kind of need to, we should have some option in there that. Hard copies aren't necessarily always required.
I agree, and I I think that's something we do have to work on as far as making it. I I know we can't do a townwide, I know engineering needs, but it's it's like if we can really push to PDF as the format. That would be great.
Does it make sense where it's like at minimum, submit one copy, hard copy. Uh plus PDF, additional copies may be requested by the town at their discretion or something to that effect, so. At a minimum, you're submitting one hard copy and then you're submitting a PDF for sure. And make that a hard requirement, and then if the town needs more, for whatever reason, they can request it.
Uh I I think we should come up with the minimum that the town needs, you know, because. They do need to have a record, not just a PDF, because, you know. It can be changed, so we gotta figure out what the minimum that the town definitely needs. And start with there. Obviously, the the board doesn't need to have all the copies. We. We throw away enough stuff every week anyways, so. So we're gonna have to work with with Aaron and the town to see what the minimum amount is, and when when we get into subdivision, it's gonna be even worse because, you know, how. Big those plan sets are and. How much gets wasted there, so. So again, this is just how I put this in there. And and I also put in there that that the PDF scan is a scan of what we see. Because far too many PDFs that we've been receiving aren't the same things that we. That are on the Mylar, and it's part of it is because a lot of smaller engineers and surveyors don't have the. You know, don't have a machine to scan it. They may have to go down to Staples and do it, but I I understand why they do it that way, but. We're approving something on a PDF in a remote meeting. There are ways to change things after the fact, or what we actually sign is different than what we look at, so I'm trying to make sure that. That is in there. I almost wanted to put in there, it's gonna be provisionally approved during a meeting and once it's confirmed. So, um did I put that something in there? I don't think I did, no. I did, yeah, actually I did, so. If a vote to endorse the plan is made in a virtual meeting prior to signatures, the physical plan shall be compared. With the P-PDAP format electronic file that was reviewed. At the plan submission. So basically, I did, I did put that in here, so if for some reason, we're looking at something on the screen and the plan that we get. Something differs. It's. I don't know what the next step would be. Do we have another, if they have to submit again? Does the chairperson work this out with the applicant?
I would have even though they have to, they just resubmit.
Well, see, this is where we're rewriting our rules and regs and it's gotta go to the to the state. I don't, they may have different. So this is one of the things where we we want, we may want to put this stuff in there and tell them they've got to do this. But they might be precedent already that they say you can't do this, so these these are one of the issues we're gonna have with revising these is that. It's not just what we want, it's what is currently, you know, happening, so.
I guess the other question, the other question unrelated is that topic that I had in specific to this revision is, um. If it's approved via a virtual meeting. Um I know at times we've empowered you, Matt, as chairperson to sign on behalf of the board. Is that something we'd wanna? Consider or because as an A and R, the entire board needs to sign hard copy?
No, the um the the board can vote that the chairperson can do it. I. I've kind of made a policy that I would prefer everyone sign it anyways, just so. I don't know, I I like seeing. Plans that are filed as the registry that approved by multiple people and not just one. I I do see town, certain towns where you've got the planning board on there and then it just said, you know, planning director signed off on it. So, and I I also the. I've been involved with some towns where uh the planning director has signed off on a plan because they wanted to get it out the door. And I don't know if it actually went to the planning board, so. Me, I would prefer that everyone sign it. Obviously, the next chairperson can. Make that call themselves, so.
I think that's fair.
So I don't want to go again, go through this too much. This is just what I come up with so far. I don't know if anyone has any comments right off the bat, or if you wanna think about it, and again, we can bring this up at a future meeting.
No, it 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 reads well to me that you're making me want to re-double check. What, when we actually sign off on the A and R, I I think like maybe the signature block says. You know, the, this is the plan, you know, that was submitted and reviewed and, you know. Maybe you make the applicant sign that and then we can sign off on it.
Well, there's there's really no provision for the applicant to sign off on the sign these plans, so I I think having them do that would put a. A step that perhaps the Attorney General might not go for, so. But.
Okay.
It's a, it's a good thought. So. All right, um. So let's leave this, you guys can review this again, again, uh. Megan's not here, she can take a look at it too, so obviously we're not, we're not under a deadline right now. But this is something that with the. A and R or or the subdivision rules and regs, I would sort of start going through it like this. When I have some time, I'm I'm just gonna start marking up what I see. I'm gonna go back with years of waivers that were given and. Basically flag those as we've always given this. And then give it to DPW Engineering to to look at and see if, you know, they definitely want to revise that, so.
I I think, Matt, to add to that, I think the DPW would probably be the department that would. Or would they be the department that would give us the minimum amount of plans that we need? I mean, wouldn't they have that requirement? It. I guess I'm, I don't know where the record keeping is being done. I know the clerk office, but is DPW actively tracking, keeping records? Is it their responsibility?
Well, they're, they're keeping track in the review process.
Right.
But when it's ultimately decided and signed off on, yes, they will, they. They have a scan and they keep. I know, um. Paul used to have a sign two Mylars, one Mylar would get recorded. And the other one would be filed that that. At the town. I know a lot of towns are getting away from having all that. Backup anyways, and they basically scan it and goes right to PDF. So, um we can ask them if they really want to have that. I know Erin has not been doing that because. She's moved a few times and there's a lot of files to keep track of, and. I think she sees that a lot of stuff has been filed and it never ever gets looked at again, so.
Right, that still needs to be filed, but if if the process for the town in this, to my original question, if the DPW is the department that. Receives the PDF or the signed Mylar. And their responsibility is to scan that into some type of filing system that later becomes an archive that is easy to retrieve from. I think that's some of the information we need to ask or get from the whoever, and I think it, I think it's a DPW.
Yeah, but you've got to remember, um all the copies come in on the initial application. So the initial initial application that gets disseminated to other departments and boards for them, like. Well, you know, like, uh, and this is what drives me crazy with ZBA is that we get the initial filing. We don't get a copy of the plant, the final plans.
Right.
Probably should. You know, that that would be great, so people could see what they're supposed to be built. They can look at what was initially filed.
Right.
And what's ultimately built and initially filed is always completely different.
Now, this just goes back to a more of a town initiative that we need to have. A central file system that is just one place, one cloud or server space that. Any of us can go ahead and access and not write to, but access archive plans.
Yeah. Um.
Almost sounds like a job for. Between communications for the town and. Whether it's engineering DPW or Aaron or town planner type of. Yeah, we need a whole system that we can have an archive system that's easy accessible, easily accessed. I can't talk anymore. Sorry, it's getting late.
Yeah. Well, again, the city of Sonova has an awesome system. All the decisions are filed, the plans are all on there. You can see when things were filed. The decision, read the decision and look at the plans and anyone can pull that up at any time. I go through that constantly looking this, you know, if I need to, if I'm doing a survey in a certain area and I need to find old, you know, plans from other people that aren't recorded. I go on there and I can pull up a wealth of information. That's every time should have that, so. All right. All right, I think we're done with rules and regulations at this point, so items not anticipated.
I have, I'm sorry, go ahead, you, sorry, you first.
All right, yeah, let me go through this. Uh the annual report, I know Aaron wanted us to take a look at that. Did anyone have any comments on it?
I, that's what I did want to bring up there. Um, the annual report, I I know this is a couple of years for putting this together. It it seems well-written, there's not much in there. There's a couple extra spaces in the Word document that could just be. When you do look through it, you could just take those spaces out. This is like three or four locations. But as far as how it reads, I think in order-wise, I'm, it's really good to see the master plan stuff in there. I don't think it's missing anything, so I'm I'm good with it. Do we need to vote on this?
Yeah, we will be voting, so. Just see, I I, Aaron sent it to me. Was it last night? I can't remember anymore. Within hours, not not too long ago, I went through it and sent it back to her. I. Did have one suggestion, but she left it in. The only thing I had. A little question about was the. Our review of the head of the lake project. This is basically just a. ZBA referral that we we reviewed, so when you read it, it almost looks like we were. Actively working on this project, so. I had suggested that we remove this, but uh it's still in there, so I don't know how you guys feel about that. I don't feel I'm gonna pull it up or. Let me pull it up.
Sorry, I haven't pulled up. Um I was on mute, my mistake. Uh was it the Friends of Lake Quanapolit? Part or was it the overlay business district part?
Um. Let me see, let me just look at my copy here, um.
These are those spaces I was talking about, this like space, does it need to be?
Yeah, maybe she did take it, I mean. You know, I think she did. I'd have to go back, I.
Yeah, because I didn't see anything that really made it sound like we were reviewing. The, like we held public hearings for the FOLQ.
Okay, yeah, she, okay, I'm mistaken, she did.
Okay, so. Oh, good, okay.
It was the two hundred, four hundred Quanapolit Parkway, but she didn't take that up, so.
Okay.
So, all right, um.
Like to make a motion to accept the report of the planning board. For twenty twenty one as submitted.
Oh, second.
All right, second. Any comments? Aaron's not here, but she did a great job doing this, I know she had thrown together pretty quickly, she's been busy, but. Did a good job and it looks good, so, most, more for this, so. Uh, okay, roll call vote, Jim Hogan?
Yes.
Theo Noel?
Yes.
Bill Spalding?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so, all right, I will let her know that. We're all set, we voted on that and she can send it along to Sherry, so.
And just a quick comment too, I just want to make sure everybody understands this goes into that little book that you can pick up at Town Hall. The Wakefield Report, it's a it's a pretty cool book, actually, that's published every year.
All right. I have one other thing. So. We received. An A and R. This week. That was the applicant asked to put it on the agenda. Aaron reviewed it and saw some items that did not appear to comply with our rules and regulations. Uh, she asked me to take a look at it, I looked at it, I agreed with her that there were some things on there that are missing. So. My. The way the A and R regulation state is basically, you submit a plan. And either approve it or you reject it, we could reject it because it didn't meet our rules and regulations. Then the applicant would have to refile again, so my Paul, or. And what had been happening is people were submitting plans and then says, oh, I'll have an extension on that, we'll come back at our next meeting. There's really no provisions for an extension for an A and R plant, so my policy was if it's going to come before the board, we're either going to act on it. Or not, and if it's deficient from our rules and regulations, we'll let the applicant know, give him a chance to fix it. If they don't fix it and submit it again, that's fine, then we can reject it, I don't have a problem with it. So, uh, the reason why I'm going over this is just what I'm going to do is I'm going to send out this plan that we got. For you guys to go through and for Megan to go through and take a look and see if you can see what. Is deficient, because at some point you guys are going to be the. Chairs and you'll need to be doing this along with with Aaron or whoever's in that position. So I just want to use this as a training exercise, basically. I don't want. We potentially going to get this at our next meeting, so I don't want us to go, you know, to basically discuss this whole thing. It's just go through it, see if you can find what the issues were, if you, you know, if you have some questions, you can. Ask me directly, but it's not for general conversation of the board. I know there are reasons. Uh, I'm sure Jim and Bill know this, we have clients that. Are paying the bills, they want things done certain way, you can tell them this isn't going to fly. Shouldn't do it this way, I prefer not to, but ultimately, you know, we're in a business of. Trying to pay the bills, so you try to keep the client happy as long as possible, and. You know, if if a board rejects it and you told them so, then that's the way it is, so. I can understand why certain things get filed, perhaps not the way that the professional would want it to. But more of the client wants to push things, so that's why I'm saying I don't want to rip anyone, the individual apart, because I I. I can't blame any one person, I don't want to blame anyone, that's not what we're here for, so. I just want to give that little spiel first, so I'm going to send this out, you guys can take a look at it and see what the, what you see as issues are, so.
Unprepared errors.
That's a good idea, I like this, man.
Yeah, it's. But I I see my role here is to help you guys look at all this stuff, and everyone's been so great about asking questions, I always love. To ask the questions that may have been asked over and over again, because. Sometimes we got to look at things differently again, it's like, why are we doing it this way, so. And that's what we're here for, is to make everyone better anyways, so. So I'm going to send that out, you guys can take a look at it, all right. If anyone else says anything, items not anticipated, Bill?
A couple of things quick. Safe streets, I had mentioned it earlier, meetings tomorrow night, I'll be attending again, not for the planning board, but for me. There's a new, just got the email during the meeting tonight. Pretty excited to hear that there'll be closed streets around the lake, and I'll learn more about it tomorrow night. Um, there'll be one in June, one in July, and one August for like pedestrian use. April eleventh, I I know as a board we received that, the Commission on Disability at the Galvin, so I just wanted to bring that up to. If you didn't see that email, it looks like a pretty cool event on April eleventh. It was one more thing, oh, Matt, good job with the report to Town Council last Monday night, and I'm really glad I tuned in. I didn't know I'd have a part, but I'm I'm glad, I think it was a very productive meeting and we got to. Answer some really good questions from Town Council about how they can support us and what's going on, and and I feel like we. We really represented our board in a way that explains how much work we do. Take on and the type of work that we're doing, so thanks, Matt, for leading that.
Well, thank you for being here, because, you know, when I got that question and I answered that. I wasn't really expect, I wasn't even expecting to say what I said, but. Kind of needed to be said, and I'm glad you were there to ask another question that I just. Didn't have a chance to get out, so.
Right, well, I know it's it's one of your things that you like, I mean, of course, the whole accessibility for these meetings for everybody to get, so it is important. And it's something that you and I both have been like, when we do go back to Town Hall, how does that work? How do we allow, well, right now, there could be people that would like to attend this meeting, but they don't have an internet connection or strong enough to to do this, so.
Yeah.
Right, yep, that was good.
All right.
Thanks.
And again. I'm going to tune into the Concom meeting.
Thursday night?
Yeah, and.
Same here.
We're going to try to. See if we can schedule a combo board meeting for the sidewalk, so. It'll be one of those things, they're going to set the date, it's not like we're going to have any say in it, so if we're, if we're available, we can do it. It should be far enough, what we'll do is we'll post it as a as a meeting. Uh, it won't be a public hearing, but it will be a meeting, because if all the board members are there, we have to post it, so. Yep, Jim?
Those those meetings, are they typically done during business hours, or they typically done after business hours, when it's the the sidewalk with the Concom?
Uh, I think typically they're on like Saturday mornings, because. It's got to be light and people have to be, you know, majority people.
Have day jobs.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
So I'm guessing it's going to be in a couple of weeks on a Saturday, but I don't.
And realistically, what that what that walk is going to end up tailing is, it's going to be the planning board and Concom, what kind of walking with some of the baseline assumptions for the stormwater management. And kind of walking, talking through some of the, probably some of the things we've already talked about in terms of how are you actually managing the water, but since you can look at it in the field. You can kind of get a better sense instead of just looking at a set of plants.
Yeah, it it's mostly going to be the the applicant's going to show what what their plans are, it's kind of hard to ask questions there, because. Not even one can hear, it's hard to get recorded, so it's better to just listen to what they say, take it all in, and then. In the next meeting, perhaps, you know, oh, we saw this, how are you going to handle that, things like that, so. Um, I know, Bill, you've been on a couple sidewalk meetings, it's. It's hard to keep the whole group together, it's like a bunch of kindergarteners are all, everyone's off doing different things, and someone, the teacher's speaking over there, it's. It's hard to have everyone hear this exact same thing, so they try not to go in too much detail, because it it gets lost, so.
Good take, like that one.
We'll have a rope and we'll hold on to it, so we stay together, so.
So is it typically just Concom, the applicant and the planning board, or are members of the public invited as well?
Well, typically, it's never happened, we've had to be, you know, two boards, if it's just. I can't speak for the for the Concom, but for the couple we've had for the planning board, public's allowed to come and. As long as it's safe for them to walk there, they can. Uh, again, public usually tries to ask some questions, it's not the place for that, it's not a public hearing, so. If the applicant wants to talk to a butter on the side, that they're perfectly fine doing that, but it's not the, not the place for. You know, two hundred people to walk the site and everyone ask questions, so.
Yeah, I think Butler Ave was probably the only one I could think of that we had more than just us there, the rest of them seems to be just us.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, if no one has anything else.
I did have one thing that I wanted to bring up. Do we, and maybe this is something that we should table till the next meeting when Aaron's on the phone or on the line, but have we heard anything as it relates to, does this board need to do any additional action? As it relates to the MBTA planning. Uh, multi-family zoning overlay, or you know, the transit overlay, you know, I know that there's the the threshold in June that is. Is required to kind of declare a single intent, but I I know that, and I know that Aaron was compiling some information that relates to validating. Our current zoning versus what the state is requiring to be compliant, and figuring out where the where the discrepancies are in those two efforts. But I I was wondering, have we heard anything from on that front?
No, we're still waiting on the the town to do their assessment, and there is a. There's a workshop coming up, I don't know if you guys, did you guys get the email for that, I signed up for that. I gotta figure out when it is, where they're going to go through and there's going to be a question and answer, I think, but. I'm not quite sure when that's going to be, I I think every community is in the same situation right now, they really don't know what the benchmarks are to know if they're. If if they're. Covered or or not, or they have some exposure, so I think that's where everyone is at this point.
And Matt, for your reference, I think that that workshop was yesterday.
Was it yesterday?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was, yeah.
Well, then. I was busy and missed that one too, so.
There are a few on the M A P C website, I think some of them are even recorded, then you can look, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, of course, and by the time that email came out, I was also previously engaged, but I was hoping that they were going to push a, I still registered for it to hopefully know they're going to push a link. To the, to everyone, but to today they have not.
Yeah, and I'm surprised I didn't. Didn't get a reminder notice on that, I was actually. Busy last night anyways, so. All right. Well, no one has anything else, I don't know. Make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, motion. Motion by Theo, seconded by Jim, on favor of Bill Spalding.
Yes.
Jim Hogan?
Yes.
Theo Noel?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Susan, thank you very much for sticking in with us and hope everything's going well, and. We'll see you guys, April twelfth.